Okay. President Russell, do you want to call the meeting to order?
Okay. This is the water supply update meeting on the 12th of July for the Marin water district. We need a roll call.
Director Bragman.
Here.
Director Gibson.
Here.
Director Kohler.
Here.
Vice President Schmidt. And President Russell.
Here. Okay, Ben, in your court or in Jacob's court or somebody's court.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Great. Paul Soa, Water Resources Director. Good evening and welcome to the, I think it's the sixth board working session on the strategic water supply assessment. And so tonight, at home, the, the office computers are getting a much needed upgrade this evening. So I'm going to ask Marcelo if they can, if he could run the slides for us tonight. Our goal tonight, we're going to review water reuse options and desalination and really our goal is to, to make sure we communicate what those options are and understand what the costs of those options are. That's really our goal for this evening. Subsequent meetings, we're going to take these water supply options or alternatives and we're going to run them through the model to see what effect they have on the water supply deficits that we, we established as a baseline water supply condition. And those, those water supply alternatives will be checked individually and as, you know, groups of water supply alternatives to see if there's some strategic pairing or so that may well benefit us.
Paul, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, I've been traveling, but um, we, I, I think it's great that you're going back around the, the, the decel options. I think we, we saw those cost numbers. So I guess you're going deeper on those. I thought we were also going to be seeing cost numbers on the conservation numbers and efficiency numbers, which I'm not seeing on this agenda. Is that at some point? Because I've had at least a dozen constituents say, you know, you've done these really good cost comparisons for all of these other water supply options, but somehow this one is not being done in the same way.
Yeah. So in terms of the, the water conservation options, what we have, what we've done as part of the demand, if you recall, was establish the sort of confident level of achievement for, for conservation, for, for water use efficiency. And those are included in the baseline. I think it was option one had sort of passive conservation measures and option two had this sort of confident or high level of confidence option for both, including passive and incentivized conservation measures.
Right. But that was established the demand level. My understanding, we had this conversation months ago that there was going to be a cost comparison about treating, treating efficiency as a supply option. So we're, that's off that we're not doing that. That got changed.
So, so the next steps that we will bring on, on, on conservation is the drought measures associated with conservation. So there's, there's still these measures that we can take for conservation that are, that are fairly, I don't want to say extreme, but they're, they're pretty severe as we saw in the, in the water supply emergency.
Yeah, no, I, I'm asking a very different question. I, I'm just asking if we are going to see figures from you and from Jacobs. I'm not talking about extreme. I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that characterization. So I mean, in an extreme drought, I guess you take extreme water supply measures of all kinds, right? I think we had discussed as a board that efficiency would be treated as a water supply option. And I'm just trying to get you. I'm just trying to understand that you are now saying we are not doing that. We will not be seeing cost numbers on par with these other water supply options. We're only treating it either as part of supply or as part of an extreme response to severe drought. Is that correct?
So we, we'll, as I said, we'll be taking a look at these. Extreme is not the right word, but, but enhanced conservation measures as part of the drought actions.
Okay, so that is part of a regular set of actions. It's not going to be on par with all of these other actions to address our water supply deficit. It's only going to be in the context of severe or extreme drought. So.
Well, to, to the extent, to the extent that we can characterize what the cost of the, the conservation program is that we included with the demand managed, the demand piece.
But that was the baseline. And at the time we were told, we're going to see this as part of, as part of the water supply. Okay, it just feels like there's been a shift, Paul. We talked about seeing efficiency as a water supply option. And now it appears that it's not going to be a water supply option along with all these other supply options. I just need a yes or no on it.
Paul, why don't we bring this back? I mean, tonight certainly we have the plan on reuse and decel. We're still working through the water supply options. Let, let's bring this back. Maybe we'll do it at your water supply update and really be prepared to, you know, we do understand the question and be thoughtful and responsive on what we're thinking and why and engage specifically on that topic and really delve into it.
Okay, I just, it just seems that there's been a shift, right? We were told, and I believe it was, you know, a number of other directors said, we want to see water efficiency as a potential alternative, right? Just like all the other alternatives. And now I want to be very clear about the record, right? So it's only being considered as part of baseline demand, which is, you know, basically the status quo or as an option in the event of an unusual drought. So that's, that's where we're at right now. I just need a yes or no on that. I just want to make sure I understand we're not going to be seeing that at this point as a water supply option.
We'll, we'll, and we'll, we'll take a look at that and bring it back specifically for detailed discussion to make sure that the full board understands and supports what we're doing and why we're doing it in regards to water conservation as part of this effort. It is such a key part. We do want to get it right. There's not been an intent to, you know, bait and switch, or you didn't say that, or you know, whatever.
I'm just trying to get clarity. For some reason, I can't just get a yes. Yes, no answer to my question. I'm not excused to do anything. I just, I had thought that's what we were doing.
Yes or no is all I'm getting at. I want to give us the time to really have that conversation.
Okay.
Let me just say, I, I, I want to, I, I think that we can, let's go forward with what we have tonight because I'm sure that there's a lot to talk about. It's very important. But let's, let's make sure in, in keeping with, I think what Director Kohler is trying to say is, let's make sure that we are, that, that the, that the cost per acre foot and other considerations around a water supply alternative, the different ones that we're looking at tonight, that we, in a similar fashion, show what conservation looks like in terms of cost per acre foot and reliability and, and time to implement and other things that are considerations so that we can see it on equal footing. I think that's at least what I wanted to see. That we, that we see it as a yet another, as another option, not, and, and that way we can see how it pairs up against these other things that we're considering. I don't want to, I don't know if that's what you were looking for, but I, I wanted to at least say that I, I too want to be able to see that in, in that way. And if we can't see that tonight, that's, that's fine. But if we can make sure that we are coming back to it and, and showing it in the same parameters, I think that would be really important.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what I've been trying to say. I just, I just can't seem to get response about whether we're doing it. But I understand, Ben, you want to put that off, but that's fine. But I think what Monty just said is exactly what I have been saying for the last, you know, five minutes.
Okay.
Can I make a, a quick suggestion? We're, we're going to have another strategic water supply assessment on augmenting local supply. And, you know, at least getting a review of conservation costs to date and, you know, acre foot, acre feet produced might be appropriate in that section on augmenting local supply. So.
Wherever it is, we need that, we need those cost assessments to be provided in the same way that they're provided for all of the.
Understood. And I, and I agree. I agree.
It's my understanding that on the whole issue of costs, we're, we're really at the draft stage. We haven't gotten there yet. Even the numbers we have today are, we're told these are just draft and I won't call them estimates. They, they sound like they might be more than that, but, but they're, they're, it's not a time now, at least, even on the issues we are discussing tonight, to be discussing, the cost is not the issue. I, that's what I, my understanding. I don't know if that's right or wrong, but.
I don't think that is correct. I mean, just so that we're on the same page as the board, the last meeting, part of what was so helpful about it is that we went through a certain set of, of, and of course, we're not at the end, Jack. I think we all agree with, we all understand that. But we went through the preliminary numbers on both what these options could provide. You know, we did, you know, dam raises and decel and, you know, any number of other things. And they all then also included an extremely helpful apples to apples comparison of per acre foot costs. So I think it is exactly what we need to be hearing about right now, in my view. And it is exactly the kind of apples to apples comparison that we need across the board. And I think that's what we are, I, I think certainly Larry and Monty and I are all looking for.
Yeah, I, I think we all want to see it. I'm, I'm just questioning the procedure. If you look on one of the slides, that it'll actually show up. I'm looking at it now, page 21. It, it's on cost estimates and it says cost estimate should be considered draft, draft and capital letters.
We all, and I think we all agree, we're simply saying they need to be draft estimates for all of the options. Right. Just a few of them.
We can certainly do that. I, I, we have the information already built out and we did some of it as part of the, the demand, right? When we developed demand.
But that's part of the baseline, right? And we are talking now about the alternatives to meet the demand that is anticipated above the baseline, right? That's, that's what we're hearing now. We are looking at the strategic water supply assessment, assessment options. I just, we, so I don't want to. We're like in some weird semantic loop here. That's not.
It, it's not. And, you know, not all things are apples to apples. But I, I don't think tonight we're prepared.
Right. I understand.
Get into that discussion and, but I assure you, we will have that discussion.
Okay. Great.
And, okay. Sorry.
I was just gonna say, before we get too far into this, I think we've skipped over comments from the public on items not on the agenda.
We actually, Director Gibson, on special meetings, you're not required by the Brown Act to have general public comments. So in this case, because we have so much material to cover, we're limiting public comments to the agenda item that we're talking about tonight. Sometimes we make exceptions and do include general public comment, but in this case, because we're really on the, in the work study sessions, we wanted to really keep our focus on that item.
Okay.
Thank you though for raising it.
Okay, good discussion. I'll, I'll just jump back in. So as I was saying, we're going to take the water supply options. We'll be running them through the model either individually and as sort of strategic pairs to understand how well they can address any water supply deficits that we've observed in our baseline scenarios. And this will give us a key data point moving forward. And as we develop and further build out the evaluation criteria that we can use to evaluate and end up using, selecting what options we choose for the roadmap going forward. So again, tonight it's, it's reuse and desalination. And if you go to the next slide, Marcelo. And again, just to remind folks who are joining us, this is sort of where we are in the overall process developing the water supply alternatives. We've, we've been through calibration of a model, developing hydrology and demand scenarios and understand how those result in some, in some cases in water supply deficits. Next slide. And yeah, let's go. So that, that assessment process is essentially, we're considering a broad range of supply alternatives. We'll be identifying the most promising of those and then evaluating those and exploring these, as I mentioned, potentially strategic combinations and using those results to help develop the roadmap going forward. Next slide. So the water supply alternatives, we, we've looked at the baseline, as I mentioned, and tonight it's desalination and recycled water. We'll be hitting recycled water first. On the 19th, we're hoping to get through local storage, Sonoma Marin partnerships and EnerTies. That we may break that up depending on how much material we develop for those. Next slide.
Paul, before you go forward, I, I just want to go back to, can you go back one slide? Yeah, I, I, and I know we've already made a kind of a conversation about this, but I don't want to belabor it. But, but I, I think, at least I'll say for myself, water supply alternatives, one of our, should be conservation, increased conservation. So, and so that we can see it as another alternative. So that might have been lost into previous discussions, but I feel like it should have been on this list if we understood that we wanted to see it as an alternative in comparison.
And it previously had been on there, but since our focus is on the sort of supply slide of the ledger, we, we're focusing, trying to focus it on the supply sided options as opposed to the water use efficiency options. But going forward, we can certainly add it. And then we, we would change the title for this slide back to water management alternatives.
I, and I would add to that, say it should be alternatives and combinations. Because I, I think what we're going to end up here is, these are not going to be isolated. We do this or that. You know, we might be doing a Sonoma water partnership in, in conjunction with decel. So we, we need to think about, we don't want to, I'm sure we are thinking about it that way. But I don't want to lose the thought that, that the combinations are, in my judgment, a likely possibility.
Yeah, good point. So, next slide. So we were just talking a minute ago about the cost estimates. And, and these are really conceptual cost estimates or what the engineers call class five. And there is a typical range of accuracy and that range of accuracy is associated really with the level of design that's gone into these projects. And typically they're at about a 2% design. So there, there really are very, very early stage estimates. And in, in all cases, we've striven to include capital and operating and maintenance costs. The planning period horizon we're looking at is 30 years and we were just nominally establishing a 3% interest rate. If the rates go down, we will benefit from that. If they go up, of course, that will change the numbers again. Primarily, these numbers help us really just sort of compare between options at this point. In developing the costs, there's sort of three different approaches that were used. You know, Jacob's own individualized cost estimating tools that can be quite detailed and take advantage of Jacob's team of cost estimators who are out there in, in the business. You know, putting together bid packages, surveying other people's bid packages and really just getting that information on a sort of almost firsthand basis. Other estimates involve just escalating costs from previous studies where we feel that enough has been done to, to, to do that. And then we're using sort of costs from related projects where we can to, to sort of sanity check what we're doing. And, and again, these costs will continue to be refined as we go along and develop each of these concepts along the way. Next slide. So at this point, I'm going to hand over to Rujiro from Jacob's Engineering, who will take us through water use option.
Thank you, Paul. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, thank you. So I'm, I think a couple of workshops ago, we went through those four options very briefly. Today, we're going to go a little bit more detail, except that I'll explain a little later that a third option is going to be practically folded into the second option of your indirect portable reuse. So I'm, I'll go through each one of those. So next slide, please. So before we get into the actual options, I just wanted to give you all a little overview. So we are talking about water reuse and source of recycled water. Yes, of course, wastewater fluent. Just wanted to remind you, everyone, that there are three treatment plants we are looking at. One is Central Marine. One is the South Marine, Swiss Offer Agency of South Marine. And the last one is the Alaska Inus Valley. And I just put the data from 2020 to 2021, they had the latest data we could pull from the state database. It's actually from the Bakua study that pulled the numbers from those database. And just wanted to give you a heads up that as wastewater comes from people's water use, if you're, we just talked about how we move forward with a lot of conservation in this planning effort. But as we go through the increasing water conservation, the flow rate can actually go down. It's a combination of your water conservation and how much population growth we will have in the service area. So depending on how those combinations will work, in some options, we may or may not have enough water to actually supply the volume of water. We are actually, we are currently looking at, so for the portable reuse options, we are looking at up to seven MGD. That is about a little short of eight thousand acres per year. So that corresponds to this red line in the graph. And that you can see that on the drier season, the discharge volume is just about that volume, except that Alaska Inus Valley is not discharging during the summer. So if you count on that volume, it goes a little bit higher than that. But even then, it's very close. So to supply that volume of water reliably, we'll be looking at counting on the last drop of year wastewater fluent. That is sort of your thinking behind. As we go through the options, please keep that in mind. Also, the increasing the non-portable traditional pipeline, purple line type water reuse. If we try to expand that, that will essentially limit the water source that could potentially be directed to portable type reuse, which will have a much bigger impact to the overall water supply balance. And the lastly, as you go through the more water conservation, what happens is constituents in the wastewater, how much, how many kilogram, a pound of constituents will go into the wastewater. That doesn't change. But water goes down. So increased water conservation will change the characteristics of wastewater that becomes a little bit problematic for treatment processes. So that's something that is a little bit more detail, but that is something also to be kept in mind. Next slide, please.
Yeah, just, that's a really important point that you just made. Thank you so much. Can I just go back one slide? So that red line in effect is, is something that if we were to say, you know, the dry season is a place that we are focused on wastewater reuse, probably significantly for, for landscape use. So functionally, we're saying we have an, a seven MGD cap of available maximum available water now in our wastewater treatment, if we were to redirect wastewater treatment water to purple pipe. And if we had increased conservation, that number would go down. But from a planning standpoint, we ought to be thinking that seven MGD is about the maximum of what we could distribute out into the system.
Yep. And yeah, just to remind you, I didn't include the volume that is currently directed to recycle water, purple, purple pipe water scheme. So it's in addition to the bars you're seeing. I first included that bar in there, but then it kind of became confusing that I just wanted to show what is currently available if the purple water, a purple pipe water is, you know, going to stay. So this is in addition to currently, what's currently used.
How much is currently used in.
It's, it's not that much. So the bar will go just around 10 MGD. The lowest of the bar is going to go just around 10 MGD in summertime.
So that was, we are about three MGD in, in.
Yeah, two to three MGD is being reused as of.
Currently today. Okay, thank you. That's really helpful. Thank you.
So the, I'll now go through for the options. And the first one is the, just the one we were just talking about, the purple pipe scheme. And this is the extent, expansion of purple pipes scheme. And only two projects are picked up. That is because there are many other options being laid out in the previous study in 2017, water resources plan 2040. Most of them are very small volume and even those two largest ones are still very small volumes. 166 acres per year and 154 acres per year. So I'm considering a smaller one, doesn't really help. On the grand scheme, we are talking much bigger picture, water supply strategy. We're talking about thousands of acres per year of volume and try to pick 50 acres per year here and 30 acres per year here and there. That probably doesn't really help. So I'm, I'm just picking up the two largest ones that's on the map currently. So I'll explain each one of those. Next slide, please. So the first one is the, the expansion of reuse supply distribution system from Lascai Nus Valley to supply recycle water to the pickup gap golf course and the surrounding area. So this is being studied currently and annual demand is estimated to be 166 acres per year. So this one is going to use the existing and recently expanded five MGD Lascai Nus Valley. Sanitation districts, recycle water treatment plant. And the assumption we are taking is the recycle water distribution system is expanded from the existing distribution system through the southern part of the, this route to the pickup gap. And the numbers later, I will show the cost numbers that those are coming from the, the recent studies of this exact project. So what you'd like to remind is, be reminded is, yeah, again, this is a small volume. Later I will have yet direct portable or indirect portable reuse options. Those are in by magnitude of order, by a magnitude of order, higher volume. And if you look at the S, desalination, that's even higher potentially. And some other projects that you will see in the next workshop, you may see even higher yield in terms of the acres per year. So this is something that is fairly significant. We are talking about very small volume. And the other thing is yet this demand is very seasonal. Most of it goes to the irrigation. So summertime you'll use more and winter time you do not use. So you do not necessarily have a full advantage of fairly constant volume that could be available. And yeah, essentially the, the project will consider the extension of existing distribution system. And the lastly, keep in mind again, expanding non-portable. expanding non-portable reuse could potentially limit the availability for potential portable reuse. That's much higher in yield. The second one is somewhat similar, but a smaller scale, small. This one is was identifying 2017 study to place the membrane filtration plus disinfection to produce disinfectant tertiary recycle water at the Central Marine CMSA Treatment Plant and send it to the San Quentin prison for dual plumbing and some landscape irrigation and boiler feed water. Now that's the intent. And again, this is a smaller volume, 154 acres per year. And the one thing to keep in mind is CMSA Treatment Plant, some of you may be very familiar with, is very tight in footprint. Even though this treatment plant, if you are only producing 154 acres per year, the footprint is going to be fairly small, but still it is a tight space. So if we are to, for example, try putting in the portable reuse scheme, then how you manage to put everything in, that is one challenge. And also if there's the nutrient removal requirement goes in, then there's a competing footprint. So that is something to keep in mind. Yes. The, the second option is the indirect portable reuse. So this one is the larger volume yielding just short of eight thousand acres per year. So the concept is, it was laid out in the previous study, Resources Plan 2040, which is to collect all the secondary affluent from Las Gainas Valley and SASM into CMSA, the Central Marine Treatment Plant and treat it all to the purified water level and send it to the Kent Lake through the 70,000 linear foot, that's about 14 miles. So that's a fairly large infrastructure that goes, goes in. Treatment process I'm showing in the bottom of the the slide as a sort of schematic that is highly involved with the membrane filtration, followed by reverse osmosis and advanced oxidation to further reduce the chemical and microbial contaminants and followed by conditioning. And we, this is assuming the reject from reverse osmosis plan process is going to be discharged to the existing CMSF, CMSA outflow. So some, a few things to consider. The, this is assuming the water, purified water is going to go into Kent Lake. So permitting for the blending purified water into the Kent Lake water, that is something that is going to be potentially challenging in addition to laying out all these pipelines through the service area and into the mountain. I think a lot of people will be worried about the public outreach and public acceptance issue, how the people will take this scheme, especially when it is going to the Kent Lake. Even if it is a purified water and all the scientists and engineers believe this is as clean as it gets, there is going to be still perception issue. And there is a subsequent fact that detectable amount of certain chemicals are still there, even if it is, yeah, considered no problem for public health or environmental health. I just mentioned the reverse osmosis discharge, the concentrate discharge. This could potentially be a permit issue. And yeah, this treatment plant is going to require a really strict reliability to constantly consistently produce really highly purified water. So the, I put this note in the very end that we wanted to bring up that there is no operating surface water augmentation indirect portable reuse scheme in California yet. There are a few that is in the design phase, construction phase, but it hasn't been operated yet. So this is a very new concept. Any question on that?
I have a question. As far as trace contaminants are concerned, would that include PFAS?
Yes.
Okay. And PFAS are considered a hazardous substance, aren't they?
Yep. And yeah, so one of the treatment processes we are including reverse osmosis is going to really take it. Well, the problem is the, it is going to go into the concentrate. And essentially, you know, what is discharged currently still keeps going into the discharge, except that it's going to the one location instead of three different locations at the higher concentration. So that's, that's one of the reasons why I mentioned discharge permit for the reverse osmosis concentrate could potentially be a challenge.
Yeah. So the point is that even after treatment, including reverse osmosis, we're still going to have trace contaminants like PFAS in that water.
Yeah, PFAS is removed quite nicely because it's a fairly, it's relatively larger molecule. Some of the smaller molecule substances could stay in the or permeate. And again, you know, the detection method is improving day by day. So if you really, really nail down the detection technology, you may still find it. If that is going to be health other or not, that is going to be a different question, right? The, you may be taking up much more of that by just having your daily life through cosmetics or you know, the career or anything else, that uptake may be higher than what goes into the water source. But that is not the point, right?
Just to share one consideration that we're thinking about is because we are so fortunate to have such a pristine source of water. Not only would it be potentially a perception issue, these trace well within limits, but nonetheless detectable. It, it would be distinct from our water where I believe there's nothing detectable in terms of PFAS in many chemicals because of our source. So some could look at it and think it's the degradation overall in our supply, even though of course it would still be well within public health and environmental safety standards.
Right. Those, those standards are subject to change. And the other follow-up question is, can't these contaminants recombine through the treatment process itself to form other contaminants that we're really, we don't really have a handle on?
And not to the, not after the reverse osmosis and then oxidation, remove, remove or destruct those chemicals, especially the RO is essentially removing it from the water. So you cannot form it.
RO Larry is the standard technology for removing PFAS. So I would be extremely surprised to see any getting through the RO.
Well, so I guess I think that's a question that I'm curious to hear about it, which is to what extent is the technology that we're applying to this alternative or assuming are part of this alternative would remove PFAS? And I, and I think that, you know, we can look at it two different ways. One is what's the percent reduction in, in the source water? Whereas, you know, what would be, what would we be contributing to our, I think, otherwise pristine source? Both, both are kind of hard ones to compare against, but like, how effective is the technology at removing PFSAS? We're actually going to be adding to frankly, you know, to a pristine location, a lake. But we're now seeing with a PFAS, it's something that I'd be concerned about us doing.
Right. And, and right now, you know, our latest tests indicate there's no PFAS in our supply from Mt. Tam.
Removal by RO is typically 95% or better. If you want a number for percent removal as a basis for making some judgments here.
Isn't, isn't it this, isn't this the same technology we're going to be talking a little bit about with DSal? Isn't it the exact same?
Same technology, Director Koller, but the membranes that we use actually have higher percent removal generally because they're just tighter, because they have to be to take out the salt that's in the bay water versus the salt that's in the, in the organics that are in the reuse water. But yeah, same membrane technology, but different membranes in terms of rejection.
If we use the same level of membranes, could we get to a higher, it sounds like we could get to a higher level of removal of these contaminants? And so would that go to 99%, 99.5, 98? Is there some, some sense of what that additional treatment might get in terms of making sure we're, we're being thoughtful about what we're doing here in terms of moving water in this way?
Sure. Yeah. You could apply seawater membranes in a reuse application and you'll get higher removals of all constituents. The downside, of course, is you're going to pay more money and energy because the membranes are less permeable. There's no free lunch here. And so consequently, rather than, let's say, just pick a pressure of 120 PSI, you might be at 300, 400 PSI. So that's the trade-off between better removal and energy consumption, going from brackish to seawater membranes.
And those are the important considerations and that is going to become part of the non-cost part of the evaluation as we move through the, the next phase when we start listing the criteria for evaluation, how sure we are to get to the point that we can get to 99% or non-detectable below the current detection limit versus the you know, what is actually achievable? And what is a perception wise, what is acceptable? Those are going to be really important evaluation criteria. And if there is no other question, just to move on to the, the next one that's going to be quick. So this one, I think I might have explained it a little bit in the last workshop, we went through this. The concept was to treat affluent to certain level and discharge directly into the Lagunitas Creek to meet, try meeting the stream flow requirement. This could be done by either discharging directly to Lagunitas Creek or sending it to Kent Lake, just as I explained for the IPR option. So the, if you think about those two, sending directly to Lagunitas Creek is going to really not make sense. Partly because yeah, in dry season, dry year, the volume that is required to go in is going to be low. So you're not going to be able to take full advantage of the volume that is potentially available. Whereas yeah, on wet season, there is not enough water just by sending recycle water into Lagunitas Creek. And there is the the drinking water intake downstream of this Lagunitas Creek. So it is essentially portable water source. So you have to still go through the purified water process. So all things considered, it just doesn't make sense to try putting in an option to treat recycle water to the level that is meeting the purified water quality and send directly to Lagunitas Creek. So that was the reason why we are folding in this option three to option to the IPR option to send it to Kent Lake. Next slide, please. So the, the last one for reuse is the direct portable reuse. And here I'm laying out two specific projects. One is called so-called treated water augmentation, direct portable reuse, DPR, direct portable reuse. So this is being studied currently and there was a memo that was published in March. And I mentioned that about that in a previous workshop too. But this is assuming for MGD of purified water is going to be produced using the CMSA affluent at the CMSA Treatment Plant. And that is going to be sent directly to the distribution line nearby the CMSA. So that is treat, treated water goes straight to the drinking water distribution line. So that's one option. The other option we included is raw water augmentation direct portable reuse. So this is a sort of similar option as the IPR options and that I just showed. But instead of going for IPR, the indirect portable reuse level treatment, it goes farther to goes farther to meet the direct portable reuse quality. And instead of sending it to Kent Lake, it's sent, we send it to the Bon Tempe Lake, which is essentially influent to Bon Tempe Water Treatment Plant. And there's hardly any sizable retention time. So it goes straight to the water treatment plant. Therefore, it is called raw water augmentation direct portable reuse. So this, just as the IPR option, we are counting up to seven, seven MGD. And again, as we discussed in the very earlier slide, this is a very optimistic best case scenario yield of DPR quality water. So I will go through each one of those a little bit more quickly. So the, this one is the to, the, this one is the treated water augmentation. So you see the list of all the treatment processes that's on the slide. And that is the series of treatment processes that is currently suggested for direct portable reuse. So that's fairly extensive and much more involved than indirect portable reuse. And quickly going into consideration, there is no implementation of treated water augmentation direct portable reuse in the world as of now. The first one that may go in is in New Mexico. That is a very, very tiny point one MGD or something like that, very small scale system that may actually go in in foreseeable future. But otherwise, there's no implementation. And in California, there is no such project currently suggested. At least on the, you know, published document, there may be some water districts actually considering it. They probably are. And some, some of us are probably studying it. But there is no planned scheme of this kind as of now. And the rest of the consideration is somewhat similar to the IPR strict reliability and the discharge permit to the concentrate. And the one thing that is different from IPR is there is no regulation in place yet. And it's supposed to go in in December 23rd, 23. And the one thing that is different from I P R is there is no regulation in place yet and it's supposed to go in in December twenty-third twenty-three. Any question on this?
I have a quick question. And when you use the process, the R O process, I mean, doesn't that result in concentrated toxic waste?
Yes, that is the what I'm talking about in this discharge permit for R O concentrate. So there is the the study that was published in March mentioned on the ammonia was identified as yet currently regulated constituent that may go exceed the current permit. But as you mentioned, there is going to be a concentrated level of all the other trace contaminants and everything else and including the salt. So those are going to need to be addressed and that can be quite a bit of challenge.
And and when you say address, what do you mean?
So either to do the treatment of that concentrate to remove at least the constituents that could be a problem. So using the, for example, activated carbon that is known to remove, you know, P files quite nicely. Something like that in a series of treatment processes that can remove some of the problematic constituents before discharge. That is going to be one of the options. The other option is try to is maybe try to dilute it by discharging it farther down in the bay with a better diffusion. And that, you know, may or may not really address the issue, but those are the things that those are the other options that could be considered to address the issue.
Okay, okay. It sounds like we're not quite there yet. How we can address?
Yeah, those are going to be, if those are those options are to be considered farther. And those are one of the, those are some of the real questions, hard questions that need to be addressed, especially the you know, we are facing bays, some probably another bay, the bay water that is not necessarily well mixed. You know, not like the discharging to the Pacific Ocean with a current, so this can be a problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, the last one is the raw water augmentation. So basically, everything is the same except that water goes to the Bon Temple Lake. And the only difference basically is the whether or not you want to connect that treated water straight to the distribution system and if not descend it to the upstream of the water treatment. So that's the basically the difference. And because we are assuming in this case, similar to the I P R option, collecting the wastewater from two other treatment plants to C M S A, they assume that yield is going to be higher. But otherwise, it's basically the same thing as the the other D P R option. And there is no project in operation as of yet. In California, there are a few D P R projects in Texas. And a few other projects in planning and in construction in California, but none operating yet. So the I listed a few things, just to wrap up all the options. I think one of the main things that you all are going to be concerned about is yeah, there is no operating facility of surface water augmentation, I P R or D P R in California as of now, that is probably going to be quite a bit of barrier to you know, go through and supply reliability, I show a graph of affluent discharged volume by month. So as we go through the water conservation, we may or may not have the volume that we laid out. So the volume we are laying now is a very optimistic volume. And they are having a lot of comments on this constituent of concern. And so the part of it is, yeah, because the marine district, the service area, free treatment plants area, service area are basically all domestic. There is quite a bit of challenge trying to do your source control. You cannot really prohibit using certain chemicals on the domestic use and that is limited. So it is going to be quite a bit of a challenge essentially. We should assume there's no effective source control program. We will probably need to describe it. But effectiveness is going to be quite questionable. And in the end, is public going to accept these options, especially the direct and indirect portable reuse options? That is going to be the probably the biggest hurdle.
Can I can I ask you a question? You you've really emphasized that you feel that public acceptance would be, I think you just said the biggest hurdle. Have you? Do you have any evidence to back that? I mean, water reuse is becoming more and more a factor in the water sector. There's water reuse associations in most states. Is there any polling? Is there any? What's the basis? I mean, my sense of your whole presentation, which has been very compelling, is that this is, you know, this has been a very negative, I mean, very informative, but you're overall very, very negative. The public's not going to accept it. You know, the 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 risk factors are too high. I mean, I have no reason to doubt anything you're telling me. I'm I'm a little surprised about how hencely you're certain that there will be all of this lack of acceptance. I mean, right, I just don't have that evidence and I'm not seeing any of it presented.
Yeah, I think it's very much localized and if we are doing this in Southern California, chances are acceptance of this kind of project is going to be probably much higher. And how negative, how positive, I may be over emphasizing, I have to admit. And that we haven't done the study going out to the marine water districts. Customers saying, asking, would you accept the D P R or not?
Or any of these options, right? You've been, you've pretty much indicated that you think all of these would be highly problematic.
Yeah, the the problem problem with the non-portable option is yeah, it's such a small yield. Yeah, so that's the not the public perception issue. That's the, you know, kind of rotor reuse that's people are seeing everywhere, people are seeing purple fine, do not drink everywhere and you're right and you know, nobody even tried to drink to begin with and they people know how safe it is. You know, and it's, you know, keeping it green, but in the end, it is a sort of drop in the bucket.
Yeah, but I mean, you're you're very strong, strong sense that you've emphasized here many, many times now in this presentation that the public won't accept it. That's kind of a, you're not, you don't have any polling.
Yeah, I think I have to.
If I could, the intent, and maybe that is how it came across. The intent is not to say, and I don't believe was said, the public won't accept it. It was identified, I think, you know, somewhat appropriate as a risk factor. And what we're just trying to do is discuss these risk factors so the board can have these discussions and then we look at the different options, of course, costs, but all these other non-financial considerations and the board, you know, understands what we're talking about when we put this up as a consideration or risk factor. It's not intended in any way to be conclusive.
Right. I'm just saying if it's a risk factor, it should, it would be helpful, I think, for the board and the public to have some evidence behind it. Whether some polling or some surveying or something. And again, I'm not saying that this is the way to go. It's just, I just heard this emphasized over and over again. And I guess the question is, I mean, that seems to be one of those things that is really depends on the messaging around it.
Right.
I mean, on the one hand, we're told, the public, we're being told a lot of things in this assessment about what the public will and won't accept. And I'm not seeing much evidence behind any of that. I'm just saying it seems to me at some point we need to do some polling or some survey or focus groups or something because right now we're we're flying really without any evidence.
Right. And yeah, I I think you're right in the we we probably need to be much more careful. This is the study session, but the I think your public is still listening and the the way to emphasize is the Yep.
If I if I could just add to the conversation around Director Coler, you're asking for evidence. It's it's sort of a fairly well-established phenomenon with, you know, the concept of direct portable reuse or indirect portable reuse. And it has its origins back and and President Russell will maybe know the story better than I do with Water Factory twenty-one back in the nineteen seventies. And they ran that facility for a number of years, discharging it to the river before they ever put it in the groundwater. And they did that primarily for the purpose of public acceptance. Another more recent example is in San Diego where they first tried to do, I think it was raw water augmentation. And it got the the moniker toilet to tap. And that that pretty much killed that project for twenty, twenty-five years or so. And so it is just a consideration that we would have to very carefully proceed with 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 an understanding of this particular risk factor.
That's changed since the seventies is that Lake Mead is down to something like thirty-four percent. I mean, we're not in the same situation. And I all I'm saying is, I think, I think rather than rely on that kind of anecdotal evidence exclusively, and I'm certainly familiar with it, you're correct. I'm just saying it's not, it's not a particularly high cost factor to do some polling, to do some, you know, at some point for all of these, you know, to to take, you know, Jack's point, we're going to look at the best option for us is going to be some combination of these elements. And I'm just, I'm a little, I'm just concerned about the very, very, very strong emphasis on any current, you know.
If I could, if I could, I I think that 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 I think Director Cores is 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 correcting in wanting to understand what the public sentiment is around this technology, which is new, which I think it's appropriate that's being flagged, but it is new and and this would be very groundbreaking. We would be doing something that if we were to pursue a large scale investment here, it would be almost unprecedented. And so that comes with some, you know, a lot of unknowns and we should be aware of that because that goes into our certainty about the outcome. But I wonder whether to go into Director Cores' point is, i- is there any data from like San Diego where this toilet to the tap, you know, issue maybe first came up where the need to sort of, you know, put water, treated water into the ground in order to bring it back up and put it to use, whether there's been a change in perception because we are in a different universe than we were ten years ago and people may, we may have a different idea. So I'm just, I think that it would be helpful to have some information about how the public accepted this and and if we miss our population here, I think we would have to really explain things a lot more than we have at this point. So
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that's, yeah, you, yeah, I understand and yeah, my, yeah, I think either way I emphasize was supporting not their way I should have. But I think if there are evidence, polls that those yeah, public outreach farms and there are a lot of it in California now are doing for the indirect and direct portable reuse projects and in general perception and acceptance is becoming better and better significantly. And if I go through in conference proceedings for the last, you know, several years, I can probably put together a few, you know, numbers that I may be able to find and then you will probably see increasing acceptance. But at the same time, I can't, I just name slipped off one of the projects kind of got the backlash on that public perception public acceptance recently and the project got stalled and the one of the so a treated water augmentation project that may actually go in in New Mexico in foreseeable future that also got hold for years and in a fairly recent years because of their perception and acceptance. So it still does exist. It's improving and improving mostly probably in the areas that reuse is becoming much more common. And that is a part that we probably need to understand and document properly. And also lay out what are the management options? So these are the risk factors. So this is the risk identification stage and there is going to be a risk management phase that needs to be laid out. If those concepts are going to move forward, those risk management concepts have to be laid out clearly.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And Cynthia, it's funny, you chose Lake Mead, which is I P R.
Right.
The all the treated effluent from Vegas goes into Las Vegas, which goes into Lake Mead. And, you know, I don't think they really understand that, the locals. They just, the water just goes, you know.
Right.
But it's kind of interesting you chose that one. Yeah, well, it's kind of funny. You're correct about the level, but you know, it's also interesting that it is an example of I P R.
Right.
Yeah, it's called unplanned I P R, but getting back to San Diego, I think part of the San Diego issue back twenty, twenty-five years ago wasn't as much the public as it was a political issue. Certain, there were certain politicians who were running, who wanted to make that a big deal to get elected. So it's it's not just strictly the public, it's also obviously can be politics can be involved if somebody wants to make it a hot button issue.
Yeah, yeah. And I I don't want to distract us because we don't have that much time and I want to move on. My my point was only, I think that that situation has changed dramatically, right? If there's one thing that is simply not the same as twenty-five years ago, it's that the public is intensely aware of what's happening with climate change. Marin is not unique. In fact, we're in much better shape than most places. So I just, you know, I I think assumptions from the past are not going to serve us well in light of the public's considerable education about what's been going on across the West and in California and, you know, with water supply declining. And I think I I don't know, I'm just saying, I don't think any of us are the communications experts here and that we simply, I'm simply making a very narrow point, which is that rather than making these assumptions, we should do focus groups, polling, whatever it is, once we get farther down the road to compare, you know, so that we have some real information about where the public's really at, rather than assuming that what was true twenty-five years ago translates today in light of, you know, how dramatic the situation is in the West.
Thank you. Just give me a few more minutes to go through the cost slides quickly. The numbers as you may see slight difference from the last time I presented this. And it's just the part of the refinement process. In general, it runs between somewhere in the range of yeah, thirty-five hundred dollar per acre foot to up to fifty-three hundred dollar per acre foot. And it's a fairly expensive option, but at the same time affluent up to certain point is a fairly consistent water source. Now this is being questioned. So the number I'm showing is an up to seven M G D for option two and four B maybe questionable and quite optimistic. And as you lower the yield, the cost per acre foot is going to go up naturally. And the smaller treatment plant tends to be more expensive than the larger treatment plant. So as some of the indirect portable reuse schemes in Southern California is treating much higher volume. Therefore, the cost per acre is lower, but that's the estimate and most of those are coming from the previous studies escalated for two thousand twenty-two dollar. So that's the range we are showing as of now. Thank you.
Okay, let's keep moving over to Jim. Jim Lozier from Jacobs. Okay, let's keep moving over to Jim. Jim Lozier from Jacobs will take us through the desalination.
Thank you, Paul. So we have four alternatives or options under consideration. Uh, not going to talk about pedalumina here, we're still working on that option. Um, so that will be discussed in the subsequent presentation. We're talking about the Marine Regional Desalination Facility, which is a called for local facility. Primary local facility and containerized desalination facility, whether it's purchased or leased. And then a barrier regional desalination facility. The slides that I'll present here, obviously we've gone through before, but I just wanted to review. So everybody's on the same page. So I'm going to talk about four topics, uh, obviously go through the options again. In fashion, and then I want to talk about refinements we've done with capital operating costs since our last board meeting. We had some feedback on the costs and so going back and looked at that. Um, trying to sharpen our pencil here a little bit as we move forward. And I'll present the up it cost summary, just like Rujio did for reviews. And then I'm also going to talk a little bit about some of the comparisons between what we're proposing here, particularly for option one. Um, with other D cell facilities that are either under construction or in plan. Because um, we want to make sure that when we do these comparisons, you're clear about how they really compare. Uh, and that requires us to look at the other options in a little bit more detail compared to what we're doing here and assumptions we've made around the design. Particularly if the local. So option number one, the Marine Regional Desalination Facility, this would be. The facility that would be located at Pelican Way in the current storage site. We'd have an intake pump station and we pull water out of the bay, as shown in that upper blue line on the graphic. And this would be a five M G D facility expandable to ten fifteen M G D. And I'll talk about this in more detail later, but it's important to keep in mind that when we design a facility that's expandable. That initial cost five M G D is more expensive than if we just built a standalone five M G D facility. So keep that in mind as we go forward. The treated water uh, from the facility would be put in the distribution system at several points. Uh, and the existing distribution system, that's going to require some additional conveyance costs to be able to distribute that water, particularly if we take the facility up. To fifteen M G D, because we can't just stick it in one location. And I'll talk about that as well. So the treatment process, uh. Open intake pump station, we go through strainers, take out the larger material, we go into membrane filtration. We had a little bit of quality if needed to help the operation of that facility or that process, and then we go to a first pass RO system. With the better improvements or improvements in membrane technology on the seawater side. There's a good chance we could actually get by with a one-pass system. We have an optional for putting these two passes in if we get into actual design. But for now, we're not including the second pass or costs. And then because the permeate is very pure, we have to basically re-mineralize it to make it match up with the. Uh, the mineral content essentially, particularly in terms of corrosion. Uh, before we put in the distribution system, of course, we have to disinfect it and forward it. Residuals uh, from the MF and like filtration filtration process have to be. Uh, treated because there's going to be solids there, so we actually do de-watering and off-site disposal of solids. The brine from this facility, which is about half of the water we take in. Um, we'll go back and blend in with the outfall, see us in the outfall. Um, and blend with their existing effluent and dispose to the current outfall. Uh, I won't go through the considerations in detail here, uh, we'll get into that more when we move into the evaluation phase. Uh, but I've listed the primary ones here. The IR updates, Sequor, and then obviously how long it's going to take to do permitting on a facility like this. And then depending on how you want to run this facility, right, since it's not cheap to run a decent plant. Uh, what is the O N M strategy? Do we run the plant at some capacity all the time? Do we run it? It's a full capacity at some frequency, that's a whole nother discussion that gets into the cost of operation. Next slide. So option two is a containerized desalination facility, and this is an outgrowth of the emergency desalination project we did in twenty twenty-one. Where essentially you can either lease or purchase containerized facilities. And then essentially build infrastructure around that containerized facility to bring the water into it and then distribute the water and get rid of the brine. And there's a number of vendors who can provide this equipment. We've done our cost estimate around one particular company called Ozmiflow. Which had equipment available back in in twenty twenty-one, if we were going to lease it as part of an emergency situation. Um, we've just built the cost around that. It's essentially the same process I just talked about for the permanent facility. Uh, since we're essentially doing the same thing in terms of taking our bay water and producing portable water from it. The brine and backwash waste in this case. Um, most likely you would, because it's a smaller flow compared to the big, let's say fifteen M G D facility. We're going to look at putting that backwash waste and blending it with our brine and putting it in the outfall, as opposed to having separate solids treatment. And then, of course, all the permitting aspects um, come into play here for this facility as well. Particularly since we're not talking about an emergency facility where we might get some um, waving of time on a zone permit. So our permitting would probably be comparable in its in its duration as to option number one. And then, of course, the facility would be located on the same site as option one, the Pelican Way Storage Site. As shown in the upper diagram there, very similar to what I showed previously. The bottom graphic just shows you um, the layout of the Ozmiflow equipment, and this equipment is containerized. But they've designed it to to basically be plug and play, which makes it much easier to implement. Next slide, Paul. Option three is the Bay Area Regional Desalination Facility, as we talked about in the last board meeting. This is a project that's been developed over a number of years with the agencies that are listed here as partners. And essentially it would be constructing a brackish water desalination facility up. In Costa Costa, Contra Costa Water District site there in Mallard Slough. Um, they'll be in it, use their existing intake, construct the twenty million gallon a day capacity facility. And for costing purposes, we've assumed that five M G D of that twenty M G D could be made available to a marine. Water would have to be wheeled from Mallard Slough plant up there down to Marin. And we're just showing the potential routing here that brings that water um, through an aqueduct and across the bridge to Pelican Way.
Hey Jim, wouldn't it make more sense to put it in Las Ficaros and then distribute it from there?
That's an option as well, yes.
So rather than adding up a dedicated pipeline.
Right, so that is one option that's been discussed as part of this overall project. Um, and there's benefits there potentially being able to store water when you don't need it and use it later on. Um, so that is a valid point, and that could be incorporated. It's going to add a little bit of cost, I think, to the transmission side. Um, for infrastructure, but we can certainly modify this to to use Los Ficaros reservoir for that purpose.
And Jim, on slide one, you you labeled that regional D cell. Uh, this is obviously truly regional, uh, why isn't number one the local version?
Yeah, I think we just said regional in the sense that, well, Paul, I'll let you explain because I think this is. A monitor that you you asked me to use, so I'll defer to you on on that answering deck.
Right, Director Gibson, the answer to that is, um, because we've had uh, folks express interest and need for additional water supplies. Um, you know, West Marin comes to mind, uh, we had a lot of that last year, if you recall, from the Inverness. Um, um, you know, seeking support for their potential uh, water if we were to move forward with the intertie. And we we've heard from um, uh, North Marin Water District that they're interested in. Uh, in desalination as well.
Okay.
So so we're thinking there's there's some regional concept locally, sort of a a North Bay region.
Okay, thanks.
I think the other thing, Paul, they need to add in the fact that we also need an election to move forward with these uh, alternatives. Under.
At least on, at least on number one, uh. The 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 ballot measure we have definitely needs to be considered, I guess, throughout this.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And just just to go back to Jack's point, I think the the nomenclature is confusing. We've been talking about regional D cell for the better part of it, well, well over a decade, so. I at least I'd like to suggest that we keep regional D cell as regional, meaning the Bay Area region. And if you want to refer to Marin own, what we've been talking about is Marin only as regional, at least I would just say something like North Bay regional, but I. I think it's very confusing because the Bay Area regional is not the same as what option one is at all. So I just, I think the nomenclature needs to be clearer.
Agree. Okay.
We'll make that change, Director Cole.
Thanks.
On the treatment process, the big difference here between the bay. Option one and option two is that we're treating a lower TDS or low salin in water. And because of that, we can achieve much higher what we call recoveries. In other words, how much water we convert from what we're bringing into the facility to what goes out as distributed trade water. And that has significant implications on cost, and I'll talk about that a little bit more when we get to comparing our project to Antioch, okay? And then the brine obviously would be discharged either to contra, central country coast and San District, sanitation district or. Uh, Delta Dablos industry, just that hasn't been decided, but those are the two options, given they already got outfalls. And then the considerations are a bit different, obviously, you've got to work with the other partners, right, and structure some kind of a joint agreement. On how that's going to play out, cost sharing, water sharing, etc. But obviously, the permitting requirements are not so much local now, they're in a different area. So the permitting might look a little bit different, that may be less permitting involved overall in putting this project in place. Um, and that may shorten the timeframe in terms of permitting side. As far as the rest of it, it may be longer in terms of putting in place the institutional requirements and a partnership. So the treatment process here, that's shown in the bottom right, it's a two-stage process as opposed to a single-stage seawater process where we're actually using. Um, both seawater and brackish water membranes to achieve our water quality goals and at the same time achieve our maximum recovery for the plant. But there's also solids handling, just we had an option. Any other questions on this option before we move on?
Jim, I have a question. Is isn't Contra Costa considering building uh, another reservoir, a site reservoir?
I'll have to defer that I don't know since I'm a treatment guy.
Right, that's not Contra Costa, that's a Central Valley, that's part of the Central Valley project, that's a much, it's a whole other thing. We can talk about that offline, but that's not a Contra Costa only project.
Yeah, Contra Costa are enlarging Los Ficaros.
Okay.
They're increasing the size of Los Ficaros quite a bit. So, I mean, if they're increasing the size of their storage, do they really have any? Policy reason, reg- reason to invest in in the regional D cell? I think they're interested, I I mean, just to note, this project isn't moving particularly quickly, I think Jim can confirm that. But um, they're they're interested in um. You know, water portfolios, uh, they understand that the the better portfolio that they have. Beyond simply relying on the availability of water from the delta, um, the the better off they'll be. So they're generally.
That, that's a part of it, Paul, but you you should recognize that Los Ficaros was built in order to reduce salinity in the Contra Costa water. So the problem they had was the river is where their intake is, is relatively salty compared to what we drink. And they put in Los Carros so they could take more water in the wintertime when the water is fresher. And put it into Los Ficaros, capture it then and not have to deal with that salty water in the summer. Now, Antioch has moved forward with their own RO because they said, well, we we don't want to wait. And we're just going to desal the water that's there, the brackish water. So i- it's really a salt issue that that that, as I recall, drove Los Ficaros forward. And um, you're correct, they're looking for alternatives for broadening their water supplies. But salt plays a really big issue there.
Okay, let's move on, Jim.
Sure. All right, so I wanted to talk about the basis of design for option one and how that plays into the cost estimates we've built. So as I mentioned earlier, that way we've laid out. The assumptions here is that we would build a five engine plant that could be easily expanded to ten and fifteen. Good. And what that means is we're actually building, we're assuming we built the cost, you're assuming we're building a building sized equipment for fifteen M G D. The intake, the raw water, and brine and finished water piping would be sized for fifteen, right, so the intake pipe. The raw yard piping size for fifteen, so basically the facilities that you want to put in the ground, you only want to do once. You size those to the ultimate capacity, okay? And then things like pump stations and your mechanical equipment or treatment equipment, you would add those equipment as you go from five and ten to fifteen, okay? But the result here is that you're making a much bigger investment cost-wise in that five M G D facility than you are if you were just building. A fixed capacity five M G D facility. And that's going to be reflected in that cost we show for five M G D, okay, because it's front-loaded in that regard.
And and Jim, do you envision that? The American schools are going to follow the Israeli, the I D E stuff where they go vertical and just keep going up and up and up? Is that the vision you have here in a five, ten, fifteen? Is it stacking vertical or is it spreading out horizontally?
Most plants that I'm familiar with haven't done that because it gets. Smaller plants that that do put equipment, I'll call it on a raised structure, right? But generally, what most of the of the plants overseas do is they make the trains, and these are big plants, right, these are hundred engine plants. They make the RO trains very tall, okay, where you need a.
Yeah.
Scissor lift to get way up in the air to be able to put membranes in, change membranes out, just to shrink the size of the building, okay? That's not really been what we've done in the U S as much, right, because we haven't kind of driven the cost to the bottom dollar, which is what many. Projects overseas do, um, so we've sized this to add more equipment in and floor space. Which, of course, increases the cost of the building. To me, that's all refinement around when you get into design. What assumptions you want to make and what design assumptions you want to make. But if you look at a project like groundwater replenishment district down in San Diego or in Orange County. Their RO trains are only six elements high, they have very big footprint for the RO facility. Because they didn't want to get on a ladder to change that elements, okay? I think that's a little bit overkill in the other direction. We don't design plants generally that way, we might go ten high, right, because you're not changing membranes very often. So there's a, there's kind of think kind of a happy medium between trying to do what the overseas plants are to make it really tall. Versus making it really small from a footprint standpoint.
Yeah, but the only reason I ask the question is, are you, is is because of the size of the building, is it, is it going up or is it going?
It's going, it's going out.
Out, yeah.
At this point, based upon how we've sized, I've done the costing.
That's what I was trying to find out.
Sorry for the long-winded.
No problem, no problem, problem.
All right, moving on, next slide, Paul. So the other factor that comes into play here besides just what the equipment costs and the building costs are called the. Kind of the direct costs are, is how we take those direct costs and we mark those up to get to a capital cost, okay? And what we're calling percentage-based cost factors, okay, to estimate the capital cost. So what I'm showing here in this table is what we assumed back in twenty twenty-one when we did rather. Rather quick cost estimate, because that was at the very tail end of our emergency exercise, which is really the focus of the work we did in twenty twenty-one. And so we've looked to our cost estimators, as Paul referred earlier, to get us the best estimates of what these markup should be in our, in today's market climate. Construction climate, and you can see that they're higher in many cases, okay? And you can see the increases for those different categories in the right-hand column. So what that results in is we're taking the basic cost for the equipment, the facilities. And we're going to mark it up to a greater degree to get to a capital cost in our twenty-two S, twenty twenty-two estimates versus what we did back in twenty twenty-one, okay? And for instance, even beyond that, is we didn't include sales tax on the purchase of materials, equipment in our twenty twenty-one estimate, okay? But we found out that that has to be done unless you get some special exemption. I live in Arizona where that doesn't happen. If a municipality builds, buys equipment, they don't pay any sales tax. But that's not the way California is set up, okay, just because California likes to get their money one way or the other, so. So that's just an example of how that prices, that cost increases is escalating, okay? And then we reduced our permitting costs a little bit and felt like one percent was too low, three percent is a little bit too high, so now when you see the cost on the present. On the next slide, we're going to two and a half percent, and this is based upon discussions we've had with our people that are in the business of doing a permit. on the next slide, we're going to two and a half percent, and this is based upon discussions we've had with our people that are in the business of doing permit. Next slide. All right, so on this slide, there's a lot of information here. I'm not going to go through all the numbers. But as part of our cost refinement that I referred to at the start of this slide deck here is that we've made some adjustments. Uh, we went out to the market and we looked at what the costs are currently for MF UF equipment, realized that we've been over conservative in those costs. So you show the numbers that are in parentheses as being reductions to a resume for the MF and UF, and again, this is for option number one. Um, the treated water conveyance cost that we included in our June or draft twenty twenty-two estimate, we didn't realize we were double counting on those percentages. So we've moved that down from before we had these percentages to after, because that was a total cost fully loaded for the conveyance, okay? So that has a reduction basically by about fifty percent. And then finally, if we look at the ONM costs, and the ONM costs have a big impact on dollar per acre foot because we're doing, we're assuming thirty years, okay? They actually have in a way more um, impact than do the capital costs. And we found that we were, we were actually including the second pass ONM costs in that as well as inflated costs on what we call another category. There's a lot of categories that go into estimating capital or ONM costs. The bottom line is here that we've reduced in our, in our refined draft estimate, we've reduced our dollar per acre foot cost here from anywhere from eight hundred dollars an acre foot down to six hundred dollars, which is not insignificant, okay? So that's where we're standing right now in our refined cost uh, for this alternative. Any questions on this slide before we move on?
Is is the the thirty-year amortization, is that the realistic number? Uh, I mean, I know it's commonly used, but.
I don't know if it's too conservative, Director Gibson, I've sometimes used twenty years. It's, it's, I don't think there's a right or wrong answer here. Uh, we had discussions with Paul and others and said, okay, we're going to use thirty. Um, Paul, I don't know if you.
I mean, the operating costs are every year, Jack. I mean, it's not like they're going to go away. I mean, you can certainly can amortize the capital cost, but if anything, the operating costs are going to go up, isn't that right? I mean, people get increased benefits, there's retirement, I mean, I, it would be.
Power, power.
Power, I mean, I'm a little, I I think I have a lot of questions, but this is a lot of numbers, um. I I mean, I, I mean, these are, these are costs that are go into the rate base.
I mean, these numbers, some people argue that the numbers in the right three columns are still high for seawater D cell. But we have to keep in mind that costs have changed in the last couple of years.
And they've all gone up. They haven't just changed. They've gone up and they've gone dramatically and power is likely to continue going up. Isn't that a fair assumption right now?
Well, we're using, we're using eighteen and a half cents a kilowatt hour, which where I live in Phoenix is outrageously high. So I don't have.
This is in Phoenix?
No, I know, I'm just saying. Eighteen and a half cents, I don't know whether it's how much it's escalated, let's say, the last five years, um.
We'd all be happy to share our PG&E bills with you because they've escalated dramatically. And I think we'd be all thrilled to be paying eighteen eighteen cents a kilowatt hour. I'm just saying, you know, if there's, if there's anybody involved in this decision who thinks the power costs are going to go down anytime soon or that these, these estimates are modest, I think we should have that conversation.
Understand, appreciate your comment.
And and keep in mind, Jim, that San Diego is reporting twenty-seven hundred dollars an acre foot, which is it may be well more than that, but that's what they're reporting.
Yeah, I went back.
It's in the, it's in the ballpark of what.
Yeah, yeah, correct. And they're, obviously they're talking about a fifty MGD facility and be, and be be aware that when we're talking five, ten to fifteen, we're on the, we're on the steeper part of the cost curve. When you get out to fifty MGD capacity, you're at the lower end of cost curve. You've got the benefit of 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 economy of scale. We don't have that here with five, ten, fifteen. And obviously that's why the numbers are higher for five and ten than they are fifteen, but we're going to be higher than San Diego because they've got a fifty-engine plant. And they struck that deal back in twenty seventeen, right? With the, and we're now five years past. If they had to do that again, I'm sure their number would be higher.
I'm looking on the internet right now, average power cost in Marin County is twenty-three cents a kilowatt hour. Just FYI.
All right, well, we can, Paul, we can obviously revisit.
We'll refine these costs.
All right, no more questions, we can move on to the next slide.
Yeah, let's go.
Sorry. So I'm not going to present the details as shown on the previous slide, but we did a similar refinement for Option Three. And this is really around the fact that the well, we start with the basis of design first. So there's two things to keep in mind here, right? We've got the brackish desal plant, which has its own cost, right? The intake, the facility, piping to the outfall, okay? And we assumed a similar design approach in terms of a building, type of building, masonry. It's not just a you know, prefabricated, but we're building. And then the second component is the raw water, treated water conveyance costs, okay? Which are based upon what was developed from the intertie exercise last year for the emergency pipeline, okay? So it's not just the plant, it's also the conveyance. And then on top of that, we also have charges for the use of the pump station and what Contra Costa Water District will charge for water fees. And this has been, these numbers have been published in the documents that have been developed around the Bay Area Regional Desalination project. And then, of course, there's also the cost of wheeling the water through the aqueduct in the time. So those are dollar per acre foot that are added on to the cost of the infrastructure, okay? Next slide. But we also took, look at the cost estimates we did in last month in June, and we've reallocated some costs. Again, the same thing with this, where we put the treated water conveyance cost that I talked about in the wrong category, double counting. So we've moved that as well for these two options, because they both have conveyance costs. And likewise, on the ONM side, um, we reduce them over cost in option number three. So there are some reductions in cost for both of these as well. Um, not to the extent we're seeing with option number one. So we go to the next slide, Paul, this is summary, so. This is where we are right now with our cost estimating for these five options, Option One A, One B, One C, five, ten, fifteen MGD and numbers here for cost per acre foot are what I showed on that previous table. Um, you might remember that we had a cost of like ninety-seven hundred dollars per acre foot for Option Two. We did found a calculation error in our Excel file. And that's been corrected, and that brings the number down to seventy-seven hundred. But obviously, we're still amortizing over a much shorter period. And that's why that cost is higher in dollar per acre foot. We're not doing thirty years there. Um, and then Option Three, uh, that costs is go down, think about three hundred dollars an acre foot. If you give me a second, I can find. And the cost in June was four thousand forty. It's only going down by about a thousand, a hundred and fifteen hours an acre foot. So not much of a change in Option Number Three. So that's where we are right now, um. Option Four, obviously, we're still in progress on that for penalty. So I'm not reporting any cost at this point. All right, any questions on this table? If not, we'll move on to the cost comparisons. So there was some discussion um, about how our costs might compare with some other California-based desalination projects. So I developed some information around these three projects. So Paul, let's start with Antioch. So Antioch, which is in construction, they've got an advertised capital cost of a hundred and ten million dollars for a six-engine uh, production facility. There's no details I can find on the costs. Construction cost is led in twenty twenty, probably bid early on, so before COVID really kicked in. So that cost doesn't reflect market cost volatility that we're seeing now from COVID. The plant treats variable salinity water, kind of similar to Option Three, okay, not bay water. Uh, and that has a big implication for facility costs, because now we're talking about a RO recovery with Antioch probably around eighty-two percent based upon uh, what we developed for Option Number Three versus fifty percent for our baywater option for Option One, okay? And for five MGD, Option One, we're trying to compare six with five, our intake pump station, Brian pump station, pipeline, all four times larger because again, we're sizing them for the ultimate capacity of fifteen MGD. Pretreatment is forty percent larger because we're having to treat more water to get to fifty percent recovery versus eighty-two. And Antioch plant doesn't even include, their new plant doesn't include pretreatment. They're putting the water through their existing water treatment plant. So that's a, that's just a cost deferral that they've had, that they've made with that plant, okay? RO system, the seawater plants run at lower flux rate and they need more membranes than a brackish water plant. They're also more expensive, the skids, because they have to be more corrosion resistant and higher, and handle higher pressures. Uh, the process building is going to be bigger and the energy consumption certainly is going to be bigger because you're treating seawater, baywater versus uh, brackish water. So in my mind, you can't really do a true comparison of costs between Antioch and the Option One. Or whatever we're calling it now, I just call it the Marin Local Desalination. All right, next slide. So there's been some discussion about, well, Santa Barbara is lower cost, okay? So they've got a seventy-two million dollar capital cost to produce not quite three MGD. Treats a similar water, our water is a little bit lower TDS, but it really doesn't affect the infrastructure. We have to design it for seawater at the end of the day. That facility, when they, when they redid this, this plant leverages the existing site, existing intake, they put a new screen out there. The outfall, distribution system connection, remember, they put thirty-four million dollars into this facility when they first built, built it, okay? The plant infrastructure, very basic pretreatment, okay? We have more robust pretreatment in our design. If they had a algo bloom, they'd have to shut that plant down because the filters would not be able to handle it. We could operate with MF UF through an alcohol. Okay, so we're designing this plant for a higher level of reliability than what Santa Barbara is designed for. Obviously, if the equipment is fabricated, you can see the nature of the equipment here. There's no building or the equipment, they're just putting it on pads and putting covers over it. Um, they don't even have a building for the the admin facility, they just have a trailer out there, okay? So they're much less investment on the capital side than what I call a permanent facility that we've designed or costed out, okay? And so really, this is an apples and oranges comparison to make between that Santa Barbara facility and what we're, what we have conceptually designed and costed out for Option Number One. All right, next slide, Paul. And then Doheny, sometimes this is the, the South Coast Water District's proposed desal plant, which is in planning. Um, the cost that's currently been put forward, which was done in twenty nineteen, again, before COVID, for five MGD. Treats seawater, okay, so really not much difference with baywater. Um, they're using a slant well as opposed to an open intake, which California Coastal Commission loves. And has a higher cost, okay? But they only put in wells they need depending on the capacity they need. This plant is designed to be expanding, but they're not putting all the wells in like we put the intake piping. Uh, they're using pressure media filtration again, a lower capital operating cost compared to what we're doing with filtration because we have a surface water supply and we have to use that in order to get the proper credits for DDW to permit this facility. They're using calcide filters versus a lime system that's lower cost. But again, this cost was developed in twenty nineteen and hasn't been updated. I looked at the cost estimate, they haven't included a number of what we consider project development costs. They have no permitting costs in there, they have no work quality testing, there's no sales tax. So they really haven't escalated their construction cost up appropriately to get to a true capital cost, at least in my from my perspective. Okay. So the impact of COVID, impact of escalation, the market volatility, that's not reflecting a hundred and twenty million dollar capital cost for this facility. So the point, the reason I put these slides together really was to indicate that we can't just look at another project and say, oh, here's their cost. Well, why is ours more? Okay, you really have to look at the details of these projects. And then you can see what the differences in terms of what we're costing out versus what these other projects and their cost or what they're coming up with the cost estimates. This is the last slide from my presentation. Any, any questions on any of the slides, I guess, before we go?
Jim, I have a quick question on, on the cost of the, going back a couple of slides, and and you don't need to do it. But on the uh, regional uh, D cell over in the East Bay, does that cost include the pipeline over the bridge?
Yes, so what I've done is I've taken our cost estimate for the twenty million gallon a day D cell facility, and I've made the simplifying assumption that you would pay for twenty-five percent of that since you're only getting five MGD, we're assuming five MGD, right? So we took the cost estimate for the facility to twenty-five percent of that and then added the cost for the pipeline.
Okay. Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Good question.
Okay, um, if no more questions at this point on D cell, uh, we'll just wrap up. Next slide, Marcelo, thanks. So uh, the team continues to work on management alternatives and costs and developing evaluation criteria. We're going to be integrating these alternatives into the model to see how they perform. Um, and of course, uh, we'll, we'll be coming to you soon with sort of evaluation criteria. So that is really going to be the next step for us, once we understand these options. And notwithstanding, we've heard uh, um, a number of comments this evening uh, that we'll, we'll take a look at addressing. And one thing I do want to just mention quickly is there was some discussion earlier around PFAS that, that, well, that's a useful discussion to have with PFAS is sort of an indicator species. Uh, we don't really have any evidence that there is PFAS in the wastewater in Marin, but it would be one of the things that we, you know, we would take a look at that source water and what those constituents of concern might be in there. Uh, but just to clarify, we, we don't have any evidence that there is any PFAS in the wastewater in, in Marin County.
Oh, isn't there evidence that there's PFAS in the bay at that, at that? I thought when we were looking at D cell earlier, wasn't there concern about there being PFAS at that bay site in light of its location right across from the refinery?
Um, I know when, we, we did our testing so long ago in two thousand and six, we, we haven't, it, it's kind of out of our uh, experience realm, but it is one of the things we would be looking at to, to understand what that is. And there are a number of other things, right? That, the, the, the list of sort of um, androgynous species and uh, you know, constituents of concern, um, personal care products, even coffee apparently is bad for you, right? Um, and the current disruptors are everywhere, so, yeah. But it was just a useful discussion, I think, and and to, on point, but just in particular, we don't really have any evidence. So I don't want our wastewater cousins to get mad at us um, this evening. Um, so next slide, Marcelo, so our, our schedule continues on the nineteenth, where we'll take a look at local supply Sonoma options and um, hopefully we'll be able to get in, in our ties at that point. And we'll continue on the twenty-eighth of July with a public workshop, where the public will have their opportunity to talk more directly with the team. And then as we get into August, uh, with evaluations, so we'll, we'll be getting to that evaluation criteria fairly soon.
And, and Paul, of course, um, this doesn't reflect the discussion early on regarding conservation demand management, and we will uh, certainly be adding that uh, in a significant way to uh, the, the ongoing discussions.
Yeah, thanks, Ben. Okay, so we can uh, open it up. I think we've got a few minutes left, if any uh, the board members have questions, or I think we have public attending as well. Marcel, you can probably take the slides down.
Sounds like the board's pretty well asked their questions, Paul. I think we can go to the public.
Okay. We have three public comments so far. Uh, the first three, Phil Sauter, Ed Jamison, then fourteen oh two. Mr. Phil Sauter, please.
Yeah, um, thank you very much. Th- this gets a little bit easier to understand each, each time, and I appreciate the level of detail.
I also want to point out that for the D cell option, it looks like with the new revised figures, those annual costs are going to add about $475 to each annual bill. And since this will be, I guess, up for a public vote, that, that could be a significant figure. The second thing is I wanted to thank Paul very much for sending some data that I had requested, and I had a weekend to kind of go through some of this stuff. And it looks like a lot of roads lead back to 5 million gallons, including the output of the D cell plant. And also, it looks like the amount of outdoor watering that's done by single family residences. But in looking at the data that Paul sent, if I've analyzed it right, it looks like over the last 15 years, we actually have through conservation intended or not intended reduced our demand by about 5 million gallons a day over that, the last 15 years, if I'm reading it right, or about 20%. Which gave me a little flag of optimism about the opportunity for conservation. I just wanted to thank Director Kohler and Director Schmidt and Director Bragman for their in, in seeing conservation elevated to the level where we can compare it with the other alternatives being looked at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil, just for your information, San Diego gets 10% of their water from D cell and it's doubled their water bills.
Oh, wow. I'm muted again.
We can hear you.
No, no, I mean, I want to mute again after hearing that.
Thank you, Mr. Sauter. Mr. Jamison, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. Tonight's 302 million estimate for a five M G D D cell plant on Pelican Way includes 39 million for what I guess may be upgraded pipes and electrical to accommodate future expansion to 15 M G D. It also includes a 30% so-called contingency pad of $51 million and a huge $81 million for unidentified non-construction costs, whatever those are. Those last two pieces are 44% of the total of 302 million. Without them, the estimate would be 170 million. Without the pipe and electrical upgrades for future 15 M G D, the cost would only be 131 million. Actually, close to Antioch and Doheny and much more affordable. Jacobs needed to explain the $81 million for unidentified non-construction costs. And present costs that do not include a 30% contingency pad. Or at least show cost with and without the 30% contingency cost and with and without provision for expansion to 15 M G D. D cell is our only drought immune source for surviving future droughts and 191,000 people's water security depends upon getting this right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. The next speaker is 1402, and then Larry Minnicky's right after. Go ahead, 1402.
James Holmes, Larchburg. This was a very thorough presentation, and it seemed to indicate that reuse is not a very promising or appealing alternative, and D cell is super expensive. On-site storage expansion looks better and better. Going back to the board's initial conversation about conservation as a supply alternative. At the May 10th hearing, I specifically recall the consultant saying with regard to conservation, quote, "The sponge has already been squeezed," unquote. I, uh, supply, conservation is not expanding the supply, it's making the existing supply go further by making customers use less, i.e. squeezing their sponge even more. I hope that the, if that's the, if, if, if that's the position of the consultant, I hope they will stick to their squeezing the sponge position and not be coerced into another position by board disappointment. Conservation is always cheaper in a way because it doesn't involve the district doing something. It forces the customer to do something, mainly do without. So I mean, it's always easier to squeeze a sponge than to buy a new sponge. So it's more economical, but it's a false economy from the customer standpoint. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Holmes. Mr. Minnicky's, please.
Good evening, and thank you for the presentation tonight. It's, we're going through a process here, so it's too early to actually comment on what looks good, what doesn't look good. But what this is helping to do tonight is perhaps narrow down the viable choices going forward. And something else to keep in mind as we go forward is that Antioch may not be the last plant that's built up there. So even if we take a pass this time on that option, there may be other options in the future, and I think that should be a little bit of the planning process. And with that, the discussion around polling, and as Director Kohler said, once we get further down the road, we should do some polling. And when, when this polling is done, there's going to be a couple of things added to that. One is, what is the feasibility, the actual, what are the chances the project actually succeeding? Because it's, it's becoming clear that some of these are almost, I don't want to call them gambles, but they're going to be very, very challenging to get all the approvals in place. That is very clear. And the second thing is, is what will this mean really to the bottom line for the rate pair? Where will they be in the future? I, I think the main question is, what's, what's it going to cost me? That's what I'm going to want to know if you're going to poll me. All right? I'm not really going to care that much about what kind of industrial thing you do, thingy. Okay, I mean, for real. But I'm going to want to know what it's going to cost me. And so that would be something in the future to consider. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mr. Minnicky's. Next two speakers, Clayton Smith and Rick Adler. Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Oh, good. I wonder how much the new housing due to the mandates are driving this push to manufacturing water. I, I, I think that I'd like to know how, how much of a factor that actually is in this. Because I think one of the great stoppers to building more housing is of course the current fragility of the water supply. The second thing, I think, I think we cannot underestimate the value of our pristine water and the value of the property and the attractiveness of living in this particular area. I only recently became aware of the dreadful water that's in Lake Mead, listening to a conversation that Robert F. Kennedy Jr. had with someone in his water water rescue community. And I, I have to think about when I travel away from Marin, how often we end up in places where the water is just dreadful to taste. And it, it, without having filtered water, you wouldn't be able to basically have any water to drink at all. And so again, going back to that comment that someone just made, it makes it incumbent as we're moving towards these manufactured products to drink, that it's becoming increasingly incumbent on the consumer to have to put in a whole a redundant filtration system at their home in order to save themselves from being poisoned perhaps. Because one of the great problems that was brought up in the conversation with Robert F. Kennedy Jr. was the amount of pharmaceutical products that are in that water in Lake Mead. And the amount of hormone disruption caused by these pharmaceutical products that I don't know if these plants, either of them, these filtration systems are actually able to deal with the pharmaceutical poisons that are in some of these water sources. And we know that hormonal disruption is one of the main causes of cancer. And I would hope that wherever we're moving forward in this water business, that we're going to take into consideration filtering out pharmaceutical residue from the water because otherwise we're going to be jeopardizing our health as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Let me turn this off. At least it's not the other one that I heard. And Mr. Adler, please.
Yes, thank you for the presentation and for letting me speak. There's a lot to take in there. A lot of facts and figures. It's hard to look at it all at once. And so I would suggest we're going to need an awful lot more meetings to go over this D cell projects and the reclamation project. It's very complicated stuff with a lot of factors that we're just barely touched on, but some of the speakers have brought up, and some of the board members have asked questions about. Each one of those would probably need a whole evening in themselves to figure out. I'm also disappointed that you didn't consider fog at all. That's another resource that we have locally. That's at least worth an experiment, a research experiment to see what the actual availability of fog is. And another is you didn't have any consideration of the power, which is the cost of the power is only going to go up. And as a public entity dealing with the effects of climate change, we don't want to be adding to the climate problem. We want to use only green energy. And so I think you need to consider developing your own source of green energy, solar power. And become the water and power agency to have your own source of power because as things get worse, the power is going to get interrupted more often and go on, only go up in price. So I think that's another whole field that you didn't consider in this presentation that we're going to need a lot more meetings to figure that one out, too. But eventually, as this, as the climate change goes on, we're going to need to do all the sources. We're going to get water from all the sources. And we're going to need to get power from all the sources. And we're going to eventually do all these things. Question is, which ones we do first? And how effective we are getting them done? And I think I'm out of time, so I thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Adler. And Mr. James Krajewski, please.
Hi, thank you. I want to speak to the issue of conservation that was mentioned at the beginning of this. Conservation is good, but it comes at a cost. Some of the costs are tangible and some are intangible. What we really need is what is the endpoint of conservation that's envisioned here? Because there are all kinds of degrees of conservation. Some of, some of the things that are considered conservation by one person might be considered rationing by another. I'm sure you've never heard that term from me before. So what we need is, is if we're going to look at the whole thing about conservation, we need to have some kind of endpoint, and we need to know what do residents of Marin want to accept as a basic level of conservation or a basic limit of their water use? And at what different costs? Because much of the costs of conservation are not on the district, they're shifted to customers. And customers need to know what's going to be the cost of conservation. If you have to replace appliances, you have to replace your yard, you have to replace this or do something else. You can't power wash your house. All of these things can be called conservation. Some of the things can be called rationing. So my point on all of this is, if we're going to look at conservation, we need to look at all the tangible and intangible aspects, and that's going to be one big study. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krajewski. And there are no further comments.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none. Let's adjourn this special meeting of the board.
Thanks, everybody.
Everybody.
Okay.
Bye bye.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.